Where's Rose?
We take your session.
Yeah, me either.
That's pretty cool.
George.
Where's Kelly?
Downtown?
No.
That's where you just talked.
Oh, you have the card.
He's probably taking it back.
To have a permanent place for it? That's wild.
There he comes.
Just one more road.
Come on.
Yeah, he coming to the road.
That's not a good one.
Keith.
Oh, he's not there.
Get him, get him.
That's right, I remember that. He told me that also.
Hey, let's keep pushing, man.
There you go.
We want whiskey. Paying attention.
Well, that's all you can do, man, honestly. I think that's the way.
Call meeting to order. You're held in file, thank you for this day in the city in which we live, guys, this evening as we make our decisions. Christ name.
Amen.
This is the April twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two regular meeting of the Newnan City Council. You have before you the minutes of the special call meeting on April the twelfth, twenty-twenty-two. I'll entertain a motion if we adopt those minutes.
So moved.
Motion of second, we adopt as presented, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carried. You also have the minutes for the regular meeting on April the twelfth, twenty-twenty-two. I'll entertain a motion we adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second, we adopt as presented, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carried. Thank you. The next item or appointments to boards and commissions, in fact, in five lines of two, we'll get started. First one is to the Urban Redevelopment Agency, Ms. Jenkins.
I'd like to reappoint Gerald Walton.
Second.
Motion of second, we reappoint Gerald Walton to the Urban Redevelopment Agency. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carried. If you'll put the next two on the next agenda, please, Mr. Phillips, and then Ms. Jenkins, Newnan Youth Activities.
I'd like to reappoint Michael Nix.
Second.
Motion of second, we reappoint Michael Nix to the Newnan Youth Activities Committee Commission. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carried. And then Ms. Jenkins.
Next agenda, please.
Thank you. All right, so the next item on the agenda, I think, why don't we go ahead and introduce our council members? If you don't mind doing that.
At meetings, we have our youth council attendees who are going to go back to their meeting and tell everybody what happened. That's separate from the graduating seniors tonight. So the ones we have attending the meeting to represent the Newnan Youth Council are Isabella Rodriguez, a junior, East Cowida. Where are you? Please stand. Lillian Maxwell, junior, East Cowida. Rico Lane, sophomore, East Cowida. And Susan Grayton, past sophomore, Heritage. There they are. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you for being here. We have more Newnan Youth Council activities this evening. If, I think we're tanking. Roy Garner is here, he's got the cords.
Yes.
I've got the certificates. Ms. Jenkins got the lifts.
Okay.
We're gonna come down the front.
Okay.
And say congratulations to the Newnan Youth Council members who have served the last three years and are graduating this year at all the college to various places around our state and others. And welcome them, say congratulations to their parents and others who are here to celebrate this event. So, Ms. Jenkins.
Well, we're doing something new this year. Thank you, Roy Garner, for all your youth service. Chair of the Youth Activities Committee, which is the adult group that oversees the council. Of course, Mike Purvis, who is the director, who's proud of that back there. This year, we are doing honor courts, which is very different, a new thing we're doing. We thought that they needed a special recognition from the city of Newnan as graduating seniors. And this year, they get to add that to the regalia that they wear when they graduate this year. So without further ado.
Let me say one thing, these have been approved by the County Board of Education and here. So this will be a year-round thing, and we're gonna do it every day.
Okay. Well, we have twelve graduating seniors who have been with us for three years. And we're very proud of each and every one of them. All of us have different relationships with them. And we're starting off with one I've known for a very long time, since she was a little girl as a cheerleader, who now has come on up to the Newnan Youth Council and will be headed to the University of Alabama in Huntsville, majoring in physics with a concentration in astrophysics. She was the twenty-twenty-twenty-one Newnan Youth Council East Cowida representative and the twenty-twenty-one-twenty-two East Cowida representative. So Caleb Franklin. Preston Fulmer. He's a twelfth grader at Newman High and will be attending University of West Georgia, majoring in small business and entrepreneurship. He was the twenty-twenty-one-twenty-two Newman Youth Council Newman High School representative. Caleb Griffiths is a twelfth grader at Central High School. He is going to be attending Huntingdon College on a baseball scholarship, majoring in applied mathematics.
Caleb's done it.
Caleb's done it.
Jackson Grohe, twelfth grader, Newman High School, will be attending Georgia Tech, majoring in biomedical engineering. He was the Newman High School valedictorian and twenty-twenty-one-twenty-two secretary for the Newnan Youth Council. Welcome to the El Jack family. Jayden Hannett, twelfth grader at Northgate, Abraham Baldwin Agriculture College. And she will be majoring in agriculture focusing on livestock. Rachel Henson, she's a twelfth grader at Heritage. And she will be going to the University of Georgia, majoring in psychology. We've got several coming up, Mr. Mayor.
I know, dude. I know.
Lauren Bannen-Hoofle, twelfth grader at Northgate, will also be attending the University of Georgia, majoring in political science and majoring in journalism and art history. Bell Moody, twelfth grader at Heritage. She will be attending the University of Alabama, majoring in interior design. She was a twenty-twenty-one-twenty-two parliamentarian. Jack Palmer, twelfth grader at Newman High, he will also be attending the University of Georgia, majoring in political science. Twenty-twenty-one and twenty-two chair, and he was before that, the Newman High School representative. Gonna join his brother at UGA. Leah Rose, twelfth grader Heritage. She will also be attending the University of Georgia, majoring in biology with a concentration in pre-med. She was the twenty-twenty-one-twenty-two Heritage representative. Manny Smith, who's a twelfth grader at Heritage. She will be majoring in nursing when she decides which one of these great colleges she's applying to study in her commitment. Ella Thornton, twelfth grader at Heritage. She will be attending the University of Georgia, majoring in biology with a concentration in pre-med.
Congratulations to them all. Thank you. Good luck. Okay, we'll continue on with our agenda at this time. Ms. Phillips, do you have anything this evening?
No, sir, it's my.
I don't have anything this evening. Under new business, Mr. Moody's up with the president to present request for funding under the LARP for external applicants. How are you, sir?
Mr. Mayor, council, I'm glad to be here, glad to be back before you again. The first request that you have before you is from the Boys and Girls Club. The request is for one hundred and thirty-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars. This organization has exhibited some impacts of the pandemic. The organization is seeking funds to restore and expand their membership opportunities to the surrounding communities in the qualified census tract. And the funding will be applied under category two point two five, addressing educational disparities.
Any questions regarding this request?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion second to approve, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carried. Thank you.
And then the second application is from Let Them Eat Toffee in the Square. This request is supported under the Small Business Program that we created not shortly ago. This business does operate inside a qualified census tract and has exhibited a substantial decrease in gross receipts. And the request is for nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
Any questions of the request? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second to approve as presented, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carried. Thank you.
And then the third and final application for the evening, this request is from Polish Me Pretty. This, again, is another grant request that's supported under the Small Business Program. The business has exhibited a substantial decrease in gross receipts, and the request is for twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Any questions, comments?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion of second, we approve as presented, any further discussion, questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Thank you. Appreciate it. The next item on the agenda tonight is an annexation request, Annex twenty-twenty-two oh-three by Sprayberry's Barbecue for one point two-two-four acres located at thirty Amelie Jack Boulevard, tax parcel number zero-nine-seven-five-zero-seven-seven-zero-one-three. The requested zoning is heavy commercial district. This is upgrade and relocate an existing highway sign, billboard sign. We need a motion on this to go on and push this out to the Planning Commission for their referral.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, grant the request, move this on to the Planning Commission for referral there. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carried. Thank you. The next is a request from the Cultural Arts Commission to have our call of the Greenwell Street Park for the Summer Jazz in the Park Series. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, grant the request as presented, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carried. This next item on the agenda, the public hearing for one hundred East Washington Street, is being removed from the agenda this evening. The next item is also a public hearing. This is a request by the owner to demolish structure located at ninety Sprayberry Road. Structure is not located in historic district. This is a public hearing on this issue. And I'll ask if there's anyone here that would like to come forward and speak, issue of the demolition request for the structure located at ninety Sprayberry Road. This is your opportunity to come forward and speak. Seeing no one come forward to speak, I'm gonna close the public hearing at this time and ask for a motion on the issue.
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second, we grant the request as presented, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carried. Next item under unfinished business. I'm gonna recuse myself from this item this evening as that one of the members of the North Three-Ninety LLC is also one of my agents at Jocelyn Braggy Realty. So I'm gonna get up and walk to the background. If somebody will come fetch me when it's over, that'd be great.
Okay, good evening. We're at item K. Public hearing, annexation request for Annex twenty-twenty-two dash oh-two via the sixty percent annexation method by Melissa Griffiths on behalf of North Three-Ninety LLC. Five point nineteen plus or minus acres on State Route twenty-nine and Millard Farmer Industrial Boulevard. The tax parcel numbers are zero-seven-three-C, zero-zero-two, zero-seven-three-C, zero-zero-two-A, zero-seven-three-C, zero-zero-three, zero-seven-three-C, zero-zero-four, and zero-seven-three-C, zero-zero-four-A. Requested zoning of CNG, General Commercial District, consideration of the ordinances. And I'm gonna call on staff, Ms. Donovan, if you'll make your comments, please.
Yes, sir, thank you very much. There are five tracks involved with this request, as you can see up on the slide. Unlike most annexation, this one is actually by sixty percent method, which means that less, not less than sixty percent of the resident electors and not less than sixty percent of the owners of the real property within the annexation boundary have to agree on the request. In this case, seventy-seven percent of the owners agree, and there are no resident electors. So it does meet that requirement. The tract owned by Newnan Auto Body and Glass Repairs, which is the furthest one to the northeast, is not petitioning for the annexation, but is included in the applications as it is a sixty percent request. Staff has completed the assessment of each of the eight required standards, and I'll give a quick summary of each. The properties abutting the tract are primarily zoned for commercial uses, with the northernmost property line being residential homes that are part of Avery Park. To the south, across Highway twenty-nine north, is the Little Giant Shopping Center. You also have Pelican Snowballs, and then there's a set-go gas station. To the east is the mobile gas station and a veterinary clinic. And to the west, across Millard Farmer, is the old EMC site. Three of the five tracks are already zoned commercial in the county, and all five front on arterial roads. So while the lots do abut to the rear, several homes in Avery Park subdivision, a thirty-five-foot densely planted buffer would be required between the two uses. Currently, there's existing mature trees there in that proposed buffer area, and staff would recommend saving those large trees and supplementing the buffer with additional plantings as approved by the city's landscape architect. So therefore, staff feels like the use is suitable in view of the zoning and development of the adjacent and nearby property based on the existing uses on the adjacent and nearby tracks and the fact that the property abuts to arterial roads. Adverse impact on adjacent and nearby properties, the greatest would be traffic. However, the uses have not been specified in this. So the proposed subdivision, though, is located on two arterial roads, which should be able to handle the additional traffic from a general commercial type development. Therefore, staff would also recommend, with the auto body shop being a heavy automobile repair and maintenance, it is permitted in CGN, but it needs a special exception. We would therefore recommend one condition of this, be that the special exception be granted as part of this annexation request to allow him to be conforming within the city limits if he is brought in. We also have a stipulation that a heavy automobile body repair shop can't be within two hundred feet of commercial uses and five hundred feet of residential. Again, he's an existing business there, so we would recommend a variance from those distances be granted as well. So while we do see that there probably will be additional traffic in the area, we don't feel it's gonna affect the usability of the adjacent nearby property. And with the conditions of granting the special exception and the distance variance, we would allow the body shop to continue to be a conforming use. Could it be used as currently zoned? Again, the current zoning is RC, rural conservation, and C, commercial, in the county. The rural conservation district permits agricultural forestry and low-density single-family residential uses. With this area, the county is designated as an employment center in its future land use map. And then we just don't feel like RC is probably gonna be a use for those lands, given, again, it's lands, given, again, it's forestry, agricultural, and low-density, single-family residential. So therefore, we feel like it could be used with commercial for those properties, zone commercial could be used as currently zoned, but those zoned RC probably is not going to be consistent with the vision and existing uses in the area. Would the project cause an excessive or burdensome use of public facilities? Since the tracts are part of the 60% annexation request, the state law requires us to provide a service extension plan to be developed, and that's been included in your packets. In terms of traffic, since there aren't any square footages or uses for the tracts being proposed, except for, again, the existing auto body repair shop, we're not able to really assess traffic impact, but again, it's sitting on two arterial roads, which should be able to handle the greater volumes. Also, GDOT would be the permitting authority for any connections to the existing streets, since they own those roads. In terms of police, Chief Blankenship has indicated that his staff would be able to service the development, but again, impact on call numbers is yet to be determined because we don't know uses, same with fire. Scott Tolar indicated there's ample capacity to service the proposed development with both water and sewer. The developer would be responsible for any utility construction costs. Engineering and engineering department will ensure that all environmental concerns are addressed during the civil plan review, and any traffic study could be requested by GDOT, and they would have to deal with whatever they require them to do to connect onto their street. In terms of the school system, again, these are commercial properties they're looking at, so there would be no impact on Cowee County School System. In terms of the comprehensive plan, the property is outside of our planning area. The county's current comprehensive plan shows it as an employment center, and the majority of the property in the city that surround it, with the exception of the Avery Park Homes, are shown as future planned development, commercial, and business office. So therefore, we feel like coming in with commercial would be consistent with what our comprehensive plan and the counties for that area. As stated, the applicant, again, is wanting to develop a commercial subdivision, so that would be consistent with the purpose and intent of the proposed zoning. Would the proposed use be supported by newer changing conditions not anticipated by the comprehensive plan? Again, it's outside the city limits, however, if brought into the city, we could see it as a business office designation, which would be consistent with the abutting commercial uses located within the city. Does this project show a reasonable balance between the promotion of the public health, safety, morality, or general welfare and the right to unrestricted use of property? Again, they're located on two arterial streets, three of them are already zoned commercial. County's future land use map shows it as employment center. The tracts around us, that we have in the city, we're showing as either planned development commercial or business office, so that would be consistent. And for those tracts that do abut the residential property, we would suggest that 35-foot enhanced buffer between the two uses. In accordance with state law, we sent this to Cowee County, and they decided not to object to the annexation request, and they also did not ask for any conditions to be put on it from their perspective. So in summary, we found that they met seven and a half of the eight standards, the half being the ones where the commercial could be used as currently zoned and the RC not. So at their April 12, 2022, meeting, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and recommended unanimously to annex the properties with the CGN zoning, and they had four conditions with that, and I will read those. Number one, the Noonan Auto Body and Glass Repair Tract should be granted a special exception to allow their business to stay conforming and a variance from the distance requirements from planned developments in residential properties. The tracts will be included in the QDC Quality Development Corridor. The developer will save the mature trees within that 35-foot area between the proposed commercial subdivision and the Avery Park lots and supplement that buffer with additional plantings as approved by the city's landscape architect. And there's a proffered condition out there that was agreed to at the Planning Commission meeting by the applicant, that North 390 LLC will erect a privacy fence along the property line between Noonan Auto Body and Glass Repair and the proposed commercial subdivision. And that's the report of the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Ms. Donovan, if you'll remain at the podium for a moment, we'll see if the council has any questions.
I just have a question. The county zoning of employment center, do you have any idea what that means? What exactly is an employment center?
Typically, I think what they were looking at in employment center is this would be an area where you'd have commercial, office, business-type uses.
And that's probably what they're going to put in there?
It would be some type of commercial uses going in, because that's the CGN zoning designation. It would allow offices.
Okay. And one second question is, Noonan Auto Body, I know they didn't necessarily petition to come into the county, just in goodwill towards them, they're aware of this and they're not actively objecting?
He actually came to the Planning Commission meeting and spoke, that's where they came up with the fence to go between the two properties and the new commercial development.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
The privacy fence, what exactly is that made of, or how tall, or?
I don't think they have come to that decision yet, and you may be able to ask the applicant if they've had discussions with that. We didn't get any particulars, just that they would build a privacy fence.
Okay. Are they going to ask the auto body shop if he's okay with that privacy fence? Or is it just going to be a privacy fence that y'all have a definition of, and he doesn't have to say so? Anyone can answer it?
Good evening, I'm Katie Gargan on behalf of Melissa Griffiths and North 390. It's nice to meet you all. The specifics of the privacy fence have not yet been discussed, however, that was actually the request of the owner of Noonan Auto. And so he actually requested the privacy fence, and so we would work in conjunction with him to make sure that it met the specifications.
Okay, that's my recommendation, just make sure he knows what he's going to get so he doesn't come back and say, hey, that's not what I expect.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Okay, it's the opportunity now for the applicant to come forward and state their case for this, please.
All right, good evening, I'm Katie Gargan, I am here on behalf of Melissa Griffiths, who is here on behalf of North 390. Here we have to speak to you tonight to answer any questions that council may have, John Strickland and Mr. George Harper, who is with Paramount Engineering and is the civil engineer on this project. First, we want to make sure that the rezoning application and all materials, including the proffered conditions, the standard constitutional letter, the developmental summary report, are all made a part of the record for tonight's public hearing. We would like to thank the staff for their hard work on this project. There've been a lot of meetings, it is a 60% annexation, which I think has been a little bit different for everyone, and so there've been a lot of meetings in conjunction with the city and with the county in preparing this application and being prepared to move forward tonight. The subject property is approximately 5.19 acres, currently zoned rural conservation and old commercial. One piece of the property has an abandoned house, and then there is also undeveloped land. We have a request here to annex and rezone to general commercial within the city. The tract is very unique, with great opportunity on the corner of Millard Farmer and Highway 29, it would be consistent with all of the commercial uses within the area. All of the conditions, as listed by Ms. Donovan, were acceptable to the applicant at the commission meeting and are still obviously acceptable to North 390. We will work in conjunction with Noonan Auto to make sure that the fence is constructed, and all four of those conditions have been acceptable. Now, if I could, I will have Mr. Strickland go through the project. There has not been any business identified yet to be put into this property, as the annexation and things like that have not occurred yet. And so I think he will talk to you a little bit about the fact that all of those things would be in process, depending at that time. There have been different things identified. We're happy to answer any questions, and we would like to reserve time for rebuttal if it's necessary. Thank you.
Hello, I'm John Strickland, I'm one of the owners of North 390. Our goal is to try to make the corner look a lot better than what it currently does. And in the process, we're asking for you guys to consider annexation for three lots. I don't really know what more to say about it other than that.
I think that's adequate. Is there anyone else from your group that needs to speak?
I don't think so, I think it's just me.
Okay, all right, that's fine. Okay. So anybody else present that would like to speak in favor of this request? Could be owners or neighbors or whatever. If not, we'll move on. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this request? I see no one moving, so we will move on. Counsel, do you have any questions of the applicants?
I have one quick question. I saw on the diagrams, it looks like strictly a one entrance, right in, right out on Highway 29, and that's just the one entrance?
Good evening, Counsel, I'm George Harper, Paramount Engineering, Noonan, Georgia. We've had some preliminary discussions with GDOT right now. It's kind of a tricky situation with the proximity to the intersection, but they were kind of amenable. They asked us to produce an ICE study, what they call it, generates all the traffic studies. We're kind of having a tough time doing that now with it not zoned. So once we get it zoned, we're going to produce that ICE study and then send it back to GDOT, and they'll let us know whether it will be a full access, right in, right out. Obviously, we prefer a full access on that drive, on 29, but it could end up being right in, right out. So we just haven't quite got to that step yet.
Is there any thoughts of connecting it over to Millard Farmer at all, or not, like a right in, right out only?
I talked with GDOT about that, and it's a limited access, and so they kind of frowned upon that pretty quick when I brought it up, so.
Okay. And there's no consideration to connect it over into Avery Park at all, is there?
Absolutely not.
All right.
Counsel, any other questions? Thank you, George. Anyone, so there's no other questions?
I do have one for staff.
Okay, yes, please.
Well, this, what is the, because he's not coming to us with what normally happens, which is a plat and all that other stuff. How will the staff and council have any input in this after it's annexed?
Actually, it's become, I think, a common practice to see the site plans for council consideration. It's not a requirement that it be submitted. It's become a common practice. So what you have to rely upon is your zoning ordinance and the zoning designation that the applicant is requesting, knowing what those permitted uses may be. Now, if there is potentially permitted uses in that CGN zoning designation that you would not prefer, you may want to have a conversation of maybe specific uses that would not be allowed, as opposed to just simply allowing it. Other than that, the design standards, you've already had your landscape tree preservation ordinances, you have your quality overlay, your building materials, so I think everything's probably covered, with maybe the exception of maybe a use or two that you may or may not want in this location. But if we're going to have that conversation, it may open up to a much broader conversation, because there's probably a couple hundred different uses that are probably permissible in the CGN category that we may not have, you know, time to go through tonight. Mr. Stewart, you think I stated that correctly?
Yeah, that's, the question was asked by the Planning Commission at the same time, and the answer was that it's whatever uses that are in the CGN. Now, keep in mind, some of the more intense uses, as Ms. Donovan said, are required by special exception. Now, those don't come to you, but they do go to other bodies for consideration on the special exception. What we've done here is, because it's an annexation, we've kind of bypassed that, because it doesn't, it wouldn't do for you to annex and then send it back to consider a special exception for an existing use. So, but to the extent that even that use is permitted in CGN district, but is permitted as a special exception. So now, are there others that, I guess, Ms. Donovan might want?
Yeah, that's my question, is since we're working with?
Counsel, other than pulling the book and going through, and as I told the Planning Commission, I don't think that's ever happened here necessarily, because keep in mind, we didn't have conditional zoning until 2000, and so it may have happened. Kind of what you've done with this mixed use in the last one that you did, which does require that type of in-depth presentation that you saw there, but in the general CGN, it does not. It's kind of the same thing with the residential, which is what we've got most frequently on the residential. The only thing that we've done there is basically house design or house appearance. Everything else is generally within, and specifically, there may be a couple of little changes. But this is the first commercial that we've had in quite some time. I don't recall us ever specifically going through the list, you know, the property out where the Nissan dealership is. They were coming in with a site plan for a dealership, but of course, they could have gone in, and what they were looking for is building material exceptions and some other things, and layout exceptions. So here, what you're seeing is the site is limited because of the access to it, and what this developer at this point is looking at is three separate tracts. So that would tell me three separate individual buildings located on the track. But that doesn't necessarily mean that that's what would happen if one user came in at that point and decided that they could put something in. The track is limited because of no access. Mr. Corritco, he's been around a while, but this goes back 20-plus years since the bypass was built. We have had our own representatives in the past in the House who've been unable to get anything here. We do have a member from the Division on the DOT board now. DOT policy is not to grant or sell back those rights for that access. What they had said at one time, on the other part, was if the city had built the road and requested the access, that the city could buy back those access rights.
Correct.
And I have done that before.
But not for a private driveway.
Not in unit, but not for a driveway, it was for a full road. That's what was prepared on the other track, on the EMC track at one time. And part of that was to connect back to Ashley Park on the backside of where those houses are now, but all that kind of fell down the wayside, so that's why the Avery Park developer went in and built those houses.
All right, I'm good.
But anyway, so to the extent that the limitations on the access to the track, it would dictate a lot of it.
Okay. So then my question for Ms. Donovan and Mr. Phillips and Craver are, are there any things that you all have thought, hey, we might not want that on there, council should really consider pointing, you would want to point that out to us?
Cletus, you have the list over there?
Yeah, I've been perusing kind of through the permitted use table as we've been sitting here, and like I said, it's very extensive. I mean, obviously, there's several uses that, you know, perfectly permissible, and I think everyone would agree. It is, you know, kind of perused the list, and it's kind of going to sound a little bit, because there's one adjoining, and we just talked about it, I don't know if you want any additional auto repair.
Right. And honestly, that was at the top of my mind, was to prevent this becoming an auto mechanics park here.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would require a special exception to do that, which would go before the board is zoned and details.
It would, but you know, there are other things here, and I'm not trying to, you know, there's pawn shops and a few other things that are permitted as of right. So there's, I could go down the list, but like I said, there's hundreds of them, and if I tried to go through, I just think that'd be a difficult task to do tonight, if that's what you wanted to do.
Okay.
I mean, I'd be happy to throw the list on the screen real quick and just kind of scroll through that real quick if you want to see it.
I think I'll pass on that, but because truth be told, I mean, I have some hesitations about not necessarily annexing it, but zoning it immediately for this use. We have clearly gotten spoiled and gotten into a practice of having people tell us exactly what they want to do, and we make decisions based on exactly what they say they want what they want to do and we make decisions based on exactly what they say they want to do. And when given this blanket here, it gives me pause because truth is, we're sitting here writing a check for a number of things that we clearly have not considered or thought about what it would look like or, you know, what impact, I mean, do, I mean, if we said, hey, it's going to put a gas station, a giant gas station there, could that fit, is that permissible for CGN?
Yes, a gas station can go there for convenience store with gas pumps.
Right.
And then, just, then we're going to start getting the argument, those delights bothering the neighbors right behind them, directly behind them, that does it but the residential. We just dealt with that last meeting or two.
So that's, that's my concern right now is making sure that, that we understand what we're, what we're doing here. Because even in a rezoning, usually if it's already in the city and somebody wants to rezone it, we ask them what they want to do with it, you know, and they usually come to us with something that we can look at and determine about its use and what we want to see there or what the neighbors want to see there. So my next question, and please be succinct, is whether we can annex without zoning right now?
No.
Or cannot?
Well, if you annex without zoning, then the applicant is free to do anything in the world they want to on an unzoned piece of property. Now, I guess I would suggest, there's some hesitation, there are several options that you could do. Number one, if you wanted to exclude any additional auto repair on the site, you could do that as part of it. And then what that would do, that doesn't mean that the applicant, five years from now, can't come back to you and ask for that to be reinstated. And so, you know, any uses that you take out are always subject for an applicant to come back and ask for them to put back in. Now, if it's a consensus of the board that there are some things that they'd like to see in that regard, you could always continue this to the next meeting, but I'm not sure that I would rely on staff to tell the council what should or shouldn't be there at this point, but the council should go through the list themselves and make certain recommendations. And then at that point, you know, communicate that to staff and then staff will work with the applicant to see, you know, to see if they can come up with something. So that's always an option.
Mr. Alexander, you have a question or comment?
Yeah, I comment. Prior to this meeting, I looked at all the uses that you can do in CGN and I just didn't see a problem considering the location and considering others have not stepped forward.
Interrupt, and maybe I'm misspoken. Now, and of course, we kind of play on new ground here with the 60% annexation, okay? And what we've done is we've tried to do the calendar. Now, when the state legislature made certain changes with regard, instead of made some more now, but with regard to going to the council commission and coming back, we are under a 60-day window. Now, the question is, is that to take a vote on the annexation or to hold a hearing on the annexation? And we had discussed that because now we know for sure that we can't have any there in this vote. So I think what Ms. Donovan did was the window to be able to go forward was to have the next meeting file approval and fit it within the 60-day window. So that?
I have a, I have a question maybe and a comment as well.
Can I finish my comment?
Sure, I thought you were done.
My, my bad. Interrupted. I've looked at all the uses that is allowed in this, in this request. I don't have any problems and I, considering that others were notified, it doesn't seem that people are concerned. So I, I don't have a problem with bringing it in as CGN. Again, I looked at it prior and I just don't see a problem with it, so.
May I?
Mr. Gill?
This is for Mr. Strickland. And also Brad, Mr. Sears made several comments and so I just broke it down simply for me. Your purpose of acquiring this piece of property, correct, is to put something on there that's going to improve, as you stated?
Yes, sir.
Can you be a little bit more specific for us to, I don't have a problem with the annexation. I think you could probably help us and be a little bit more specific. I don't see you, just let me just finish this one second. You putting anything on there that's not going to be of value to you because of the in and out, right in, right out and all the way, everything instruction and Mr. Sears brought that up, you're going to put highest and best use for you, that return on your investment, et cetera. So you're not going to just, you know, stick whatever on there. You want to maximize that opportunity. Would that be safe to say?
Yes, sir.
All right, so can you be a little bit more specific as to maybe a direction you're heading?
I can try to answer your question, but right now, we're currently, I guess so to speak, we're in no man's land. I mean, you know, we can't market the property because we don't know what we're marketing it for. And this is what we're, this is what we're requesting from you guys is to get this annexation so then we can turn around and market it and be able to target the people that are approved on this list.
Mr. Phillips, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I do and I think, I think I can help clarify Mr. Harper's comment there. And I'm not taking a position on the annexation here, but I do think one thing we got to realize, and if we could zoom out larger, what this is, is part of an unincorporated island. I know that we've had conversations before about cleaning up islands because the islands create service conflicts and unknowns. I think, I think what Mr. Strickland is talking about is, given the fact that he's in an unincorporated island and it's zoned for whatever the term we asked about earlier in the county, I don't think county sewer is available.
It is not.
What was that, what was that comment?
Service issue because of the unincorporated island. And I think one thing we may want to do is look at this as an opportunity to start cleaning up the island. So I think I want to bring that to attention. I think that's why he said, without sewer, he really doesn't have a commercial use.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we actually talked about that, that one of the retreats was to start going after and filling in the holes, so to speak. Yeah, so I don't, I don't have any problem with the annexation, so you can move forward. I think everything will work its way out.
I do have one quick question for the applicant and this is regarding the staff also. If staff desires or needs or wants the copy of that traffic study, would you all be willing to provide that to staff?
Yes.
Does the traffic study to be completed sometime in the future?
Sure.
Absolutely.
Okay, any other questions from counsel? Okay.
Well, I, one other quick question, since we brought it up and I just was asking Ms. Jenkins about, and this might be for Ms. Donovan and as well as y'all, since there seems to be some ambiguity question about how broad the CGN zoning is, would a light commercial zoning be appropriate or a better zoning? Would it fit what y'all envision at some point? Something that's not quite so broad in scope?
I think the only thing that is left in, to even close to what you're talking about, maybe neighborhood-based, that's the, it's not CGN, but it's CSN or something like that?
Something like that, yeah. Because it abuts the Avery Park, which is the master plan community.
Can I, can I break later, son?
Please.
I think that part of, a lot of these questions came up at the commission meeting and I think that when we discussed that at the commission meeting, we did look at the issue with the island and we did look at the majority of the uses all around and they are zoned mostly CGN. And so I think that the application for annexation and rezoning that's before the council is extremely consistent with the uses there around and is, is the ability for this to be brought in. And so we would ask that it be considered for the CGN.
Yeah, my only concern is the, the property owners, the homeowners that abut the back end there and just something that's not of a nuisance to them and then we end up hearing about it again.
I understand, I understand. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? If not, I close the public hearing and I'm going to ask for a motion to accept the report and the recommendation of the Planning Commission.
Make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Okay, now we're going to need a motion on the annexation. And we had no conditions made on that, did we?
Yes, sir.
Oh, we didn't, okay.
There were four conditions.
Okay, that you covered, okay. I was referring to addition, but we had the four.
So I'll make that motion with the conditions, stated conditions.
Okay. Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Now, we need a motion on the rezoning and?
Make a motion for the zoning to be CGN.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And I believe Mr. Sears just has to come back to the next meeting, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. You can let the mayor back in, please. And thank you for making improvements to our cities.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, William, Tim, and Boz, appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
The next item on the agenda under visitors tonight is a request from the Rotary to erect the memorial crosses during Memorial Day week, the same as last year. Is there a motion?
Motion second.
Motion of second. We grant the request as presented. Any discussion?
Just a quick question, where are these crosses going? I just didn't hear where in there about that.
Is there someone here from Rotary today?
I don't think Mr. Pope is.
May I be able to answer that question? Does anybody remember what they did last year?
Yeah, I got a decent, I got a decent recollection, I may not remember.
It was around the square.
It was around the square and it was actually.
And on the courthouse side of the square.
But it's also coming into town.
That's right.
On the main or carol.
We had some in Greenwood Street Park, we had some at Veterans Park, so they were, some in Wadsworth front, so they were kind of spread around the city in public places. Yeah, it was a great little project.
Okay, great.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, you can by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, son? Motion carried. That ends our regular agenda this evening unless Mr. Sears or someone has a reason for an executive severance, that's the right answer. Appreciate that. Anyone come tonight off agenda that has anything off agenda? All right, anyone from council have anything tonight?
No, sir.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, we adjourn. All those in favor, you can by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, son? Motion carried. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.